At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for January 13th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, would you just mark that Lisa is not present this evening?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to approval of minutes, December 9th, 2019.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a something I want to bring up.
Councilwoman Kilgill, go ahead.
Page eight, right at the beginning of council comments in that, the fourth line down, it says to continue, it should have improving in there between continue and our circumstances. That's all I have, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'll move the minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
I just had one comment, I've got, I just wanted to point out to people, my brother-in-law's company, Metro Environmental, had done some work for DPW. I have no role in it, but I just wanted to bring that forward.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Who, first and second in that?
Steve's moved it.
I move the bills.
And then Councilwoman Walton, right?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda this evening. I would entertain a motion to allow our friends from SLARA to go in front of Old Business if anyone else would be willing to do that.
I mean, their presentation is listed for it, anyway.
Well, right, and then they have the athletic field thing, too.
Okay.
So I was just gonna bump that.
Consolidate it, yeah, okay.
But...
No, that's great. I'll make the motion for that to happen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. 2020 city council meeting schedule.
That was under...
No, it's the consent.
For everyone in the crowd tonight, I'm sorry, the consent agenda included the city council meeting schedule and board of review reappointment. Thank you, guys. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mindy Fernandez, and I work for State Representative Kathy Crawford. Just to let you know, there's one bill up in Lansing that we are getting a ton of comments on, and that's House Bill 5229. It is a regional transit tax, and it is a large tax increase. It is not involved with a heavily cap. It is above and beyond that, and it can be up to five mils over 20 years, so it's very egregious. And the problem is that we won't get a lot of the services out here in part of the 38th District, so I wanted to let you know about it. We are working on it. Kathy Crawford has been a leader on making sure this doesn't get to the floor and doesn't get a vote. We've been working extensively with leadership to make sure that our communities in the 38th District aren't harmed by this. It takes a lot of money out of our communities, and we don't know where it goes, we don't know, we don't get told where it went. A lot of it will be going down to the city of Detroit for D-DOT and also the Ann Arbor Transit, and they just want to put a train from Ann Arbor to the airport. Those are both things that we don't use out here, but we will all be paying a lot of money for it. So just that you know that Representative Crawford is leading on this, and I'm very proud of what she's done so far to make sure that this tax doesn't hit us, hit our communities.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
At this time, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown. Bob?
I'll keep this brief, because I know we have a fairly lengthy conversation coming up. I just want you to know that we're looking at the final budget status, all the bills and the payment and sponsorship revenues of the Cool Yule, and as soon as we have that information, we'll have a critique meeting. And then after the initial, three parties look at the initial information, then we'll open it up to all the participants, so we hope to do that sometime in February. The DDA Board Retreat, just a reminder, we have our annual DDA Board Retreat, moving the 8:00 AM DDA Board Meeting to 6:00 PM. And we'll still have the Board Meeting, it'll be listed as, at a special time, we'll get that posted through Lisa, the clerk. The meeting will start with the regular Board Meeting at 6:00 PM, it'll be a short agenda, and then we'll follow into the retreat, it'll be in the second floor, green, the Oak Room at South Lion Hotel. Usually lasts about three hours, and we do have a public comment both at the meeting and also at the Board Retreat as well. Working on the DDA budget, of course, with City Manager, the DDA Annual Report for 2019 should be ready next council meeting. The 2020 edition of the Downtown Shopping Guide goes to the printer the end of this week. The 2020 Community Events Guide should be finished by February, just trying to check all those dates on all those events, make sure we get it out. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Kurtschwell?
Oh, you can go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I just had a quick question asked. I spoke with a lot of businesses over the past couple months, actually, the issue came out in September and October, and the issue is regarding, do we charge people fees if they want outdoor seating? Do they have to get a permit? Is that a fee that they have to pay?
You mean, a liquor establishment along Lake or Lafayette?
Anywhere.
Anywhere?
Yeah.
I don't believe so.
So there's no fee that somebody has to pay? Say, I want to bring my tables out and sit out on the sidewalk.
You have to make it clear that the Liquor Control Commission's aware of it, the local police department has to inspect that, look at it, I believe.
But there are no fees for that?
But there's no fees? And then what about if you want to pipe music outside? Are there fees for that?
I don't believe we have any ordinances on that.
Okay, so if I wanted to pipe some music outside so that people could sit outside and enjoy, there's no cost to that, to that business?
Yes.
Okay, you might want to get that clarified, because I think there's some businesses that think that there is a fee associated with that.
Okay.
So I'm just sort of bringing that to your attention.
Sure, good, good question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dilk?
Really quickly, I was, it is important, because I've talked to a lot of businesses that said the same thing, they're like, "We can't do that, it costs money," and I think it's weird. I'd say two things really quickly, the New Year's Eve event, I know we haven't been here since then, it was really great. And not only was it great in the tent, but it was really neat to come out after, and come out at midnight, and the champagne was a nice touch, but it was also nice to come out, and then there were families out there, my daughter came, other people's daughters came, it was, it was really kind of fun to then have like a little family thing. And the only thing I wanted to say is, I had heard a few people say, if you thought about expanding it, I know this was the first year, but if there was anything that anyone could do with a family event outside, you know, the hour before or something, that there was already a lot of people out there, so it was really neat. But I also noticed how that kind of event, you know, really helps all the other businesses on the street, how packed the corner social was and other places, so it was just really great, it was, it was a great event, had a lot of fun. And then the other, only other thing I had was, some, people ask me this about once a week, so I'm just gonna ask it again, what's happening with the old draft, the Draft Street or Grilled Tomato or whatever it was?
It's only been 10 things in the last 10 years.
Yes.
We were told there's a purchase offer, should be signed in the next few days.
Wow.
We were told that last week, and so a few days, I think, is by the end of this week or next.
You don't know or can't tell what it might be?
Don't know really any of the details. Well, I do know one detail that I think is very important, it's an unrelated party to the current owner.
Oh, okay, great.
To me, that's, in my opinion, huge. Leave it at that.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Councilwoman Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know what, I'm gonna just piggyback off of Councilmember Dilk for a moment and just say that in New Year's, Cool Yule, New Year's Eve, those are great ways to end the year, start our year, and I know that SLARA has put out their events guide. We did one of these last year with all of the events.
Yeah, that's the one I mentioned, we'll have that out in February.
It will be out in February.
Because we have to check with all the organizations.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got that confused with the shopping guide that we did last year.
Right, we're gonna do both. Shopping guide goes to the printer this week, the events guide, we hope to have that out in February.
Yeah, these are wonderful, I mean, I kept mine on my fridge all last year and just checked off the events as they happened, I mean, we have a great little city with lots of things going on, so it's a really good way to keep it organized.
Thanks.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes, Bob, quick question. Our lighting is very beautiful downtown, okay? How much longer are we gonna be able to keep it up there? I hope we can keep it up for the rest of the month.
Well, I think we're gonna cut that off this week, we'll get that out, Doug, but last year, we brought it back for the week of Valentine's Day, and we're gonna do that. There's a proposal that the DDA will talk about at the Board Retreat, adding a little bit of blue lights, and then on the holidays, bring back like for Memorial Day and 4th of July, so we would have red, white, and blue, but that's up to the DDA if we do that, and we'll see.
Okay, all right, just wanted to ask you, thank you.
Lisa, go ahead.
If I can, I just wanted to address a little bit Councilmember Kurtschwell's question about outdoor seating. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission does require an application process and a fee be paid, and they have certain requirements about an enclosed area, so just FYI, just that additional information. And also, oftentimes you see, and I don't know that that's the case here in South Lion, but oftentimes you see outdoor seating areas kind of infringing on city sidewalks, in which case there would be additional permissions and insurance requirements. Maybe not an application fee on the city end of it, but there would be certain things if they were gonna use the city sidewalk that they would have to comply with.
I think the point was, thank you for the information, it was very helpful, because, yeah, now there is a fee, so maybe people are getting it confused, is that you want to do everything you can for the businesses and provide the best favorable climate for customers to come to their business, maybe they might want to sit outside. I know I'm an outdoor person, I would rather sit outside and have my coffee, have whatever it is, but if it's costing the business owner money in order to do that, you know, I was, I'd like to find a way around that, if I could.
If it's a liquor license establishment?
Yeah.
You don't have any control over it.
Yeah, okay.
So the fee is at the state level?
So the fee's at the state level?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
I will find out how much that is, so we know what we're talking about in terms of dollars.
Councilmember Kennedy, and then I'll come down to you, Glenn.
One of the other things that's come up in the past is when they established that outdoor seating area, there were issues with some businesses where it kept expanding, so they had to, I believe, anchor it permanently so it didn't keep expanding into the sidewalk as well, and taking up walking space.
Well, they furnish, I do know that they furnish a drawing to the city, so you can keep track of the area, and yes, so I know there have been instances over the past two or three years where things expanded and they were brought back, you're right.
Councilwoman Kilgill?
Well, that was the gist of what I was going to mention, is that it isn't just willy-nilly they get to decide where they're going to end up setting up tables and things, because the public right of way is still an important part of our downtown pedestrian traffic, so we can't impede that.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else have anything for Bob tonight? All right, we'll see you in a bit.
Good to see you walking easily, that's helpful.
Fire chief report with Chief Vogel.
Good evening.
Evening.
Real quick, we have a presentation coming in February, but I did want to say that we finished the year with 933 runs, which is over 200 more than last year, extraordinary number percentage-wise, I can't find anybody else that had a 36% increase like that, so we're researching why. We ended the year with a bang, I'll tell you, between Chief Casca's death and then the fire at Border Cantina, or the, the?
Lion.
Lion Cantina, thank you. That was a very expensive day between South Lion Eve, equipment damage, and personnel hours. We were out there twice for a total of about seven to eight hours. The ladder truck broke, we're in the process of trying to fix the waterway, it got used twice, first time it caught on fire, and then the second time later that afternoon when it caught on fire. The third time, I told Lion, "We just can't come back," and they bulldozed it, we just couldn't get, it got unsafe. Matter of fact, our brand-new thermal imager camera got left in the building, so did Green Oaks, when the whole building caught on fire and collapsed, and everyone was running out the building. Luckily, we got ours back, and it's getting sent, hopefully under warranty work, to get fixed, it's brand-new, it was a shame. New Year's Eve, we had zero issues with the eve, that was good, unfortunately, we were busy with other. Good news is, the committee to buy SCBA has expanded to include Milford now. We will be teaming up with Milford Lion Township, and the grant could escalate over $500,000, so it's pretty exciting. I think the bigger we get, the more likely we will get this, so that's exciting. Lastly, we've hired two new employees recently, and I've got a third in the process, so exciting, so, questions?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Rob, what was the number of, the number of runs again this year, nine something?
933. I, I'll break it down for you, come February, I just wanted you to understand that this is an extraordinary number from where we were. When I came, we did like 600-something, and we've, in the two-plus years I've been here, we're up to 933. We know that the medicals take up, but also our fires are up. Seems like we've been in Green Oak a lot, we've had a couple, matter of fact, last week, we were in South Lion Woods for a fire, luckily that turned out to be not a lot, but it's just been significant. I think we are nine fires in the city more than last year, which is a pretty good number for South Lion.
Well, the interesting part is, you know, you compare it, I last reported from Lion Township, it's only about 600 less than what they reported.
Yeah, well, you know, and they're growing it fast, you know, I expect you'll probably see that about 1,800 soon for them.
Yeah.
So...
It's a lot of runs.
Lot of runs.
Thanks.
Anything else, anything for Chief Vogel? Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Chief Vogel, I want to just bring something to yours and everyone's attention. There was a very nice write-up about you in our Lion Township Quarterly Magazine, and it was very nice.
Wrong spelling. They spelled my name wrong, but that's...
The feeling and the sentiment is there.
Yeah, yeah, it was...
We should make mention of it, because you've done such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
For all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtschwell, go ahead.
And Chief Vogel, I heard a lot of comments from people in the community that want to thank you and the fire department and the city for the respect that you gave Chief Casca.
Yeah, I...
He was well-liked, and...
It was unfortunate when he died.
Yeah.
Besides the obvious, it caught us, the next day we had the fire, and it was just a holiday, but I think the community really helped me out, and it was a great funeral, Phillips was great, the motorcycle club he was part of really helped, and then my own members. It was pretty extraordinary amount of work just to get the fire engine ready for his casket.
Yeah.
It looked simple, but that was pulling all the hose out, taking dividers out, cleaning it, there was a lot of work with the family, there was concerns about getting him up and in. We first thought it'd probably be nice if he went on the truck that he bought, but that one's twice as high, and it was just impractical. So, working with Bobby Casca and the son-in-law, EJ, we just, it was really helpful, and the weather was terrible, and I never stood under a .21 gun salute, that was pretty earth-shattering, it was pretty, pretty interesting, so...
Thank you, though, I think the community thanks you, thanks the effort, and I think it says a lot about our community, you know, how we respect those that serve this community, and when they pass on, how we treat them and care for them, so thank you very, very much, very appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just to add on to that, I really liked the added touch that you put on the fire truck with the Lions.
Yeah.
Since he was our...
Yeah, I reached out to the school about a year ago, the superintendent and the principal gave me permission, and it took me a little bit longer to get them printed correctly, I had a couple versions I didn't like, finally, we got the rights to the school, so we put them on the fire trucks, and, yeah, I know, it just doesn't have the East Cougar on there, but we don't go there, so...
Well, I just, it was a nice little touch for those that knew, so, there was comments about that.
School pride, half my department went there, so...
Anyone else have something for Chief Vogel tonight?
Just wanted to say congratulations for your recruiting efforts, I mean, that's terrific.
Yeah, so the committee, that's, that's all them, the, we reached out to the schools, we've been in the schools, East and Old, and then just, I think, the video that past member made, and just a couple interesting, I think the firing even helped, unbelievable, but, you know, hopefully they stick, that's the trick, is keeping them, and there's enough to do, so...
Well, and everybody's having recruiting and retention problems, so it's really nice that people stepped up and are willing to come help us, that's good.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Move on to the police chief report, Chief Sovik.
Good evening, our, our new officer, Mark Mostick, will be beginning employment with us on this Wednesday, brings 25 years of experience from the Farmington Hills Police Department, and so we're looking forward to having him aboard. He'll be eventually working the midnight shift after his field training process, but we're gonna strategically place him with our youngest officer, Schneeman, so we can like a great mentoring opportunity for our younger guys, so it's important to have that training. I'm still waiting to hear back from our rep from WatchGuard, I've been in contact, playing, you know, email tag with them, but I should be hearing within the next day or two when we're gonna be receiving our new in-car cameras and get that process rolling. I had a meeting with the IT company today to discuss our immediate, some software needs, and our biggest thing at this point was to be CJS compliant for our lean terminal, and so that is going to be happening. I think most of the analysis is done with our system as far as what they're looking for and what, what our needs are, so, good meeting as far as what we, our immediate needs and a couple year down the road of plan, so we can start preparing for budgets for the next couple of years, so that was very fruitful today. We had zero issues with the eve as well, that tent was, was great, it was warm, it was just a great band, and it was, everyone was having a good time, and people did a great job of just policing themselves and having a good time, so it was good to be a part of that for a little while. Continue working on the annual report and the 2020, 2021 budget, but as far as, go back to Mostick, we're gonna be introducing him at our next city council meeting, along with some of our new cadets and other promotional positions, so, next meeting before that.
Have anything for Chief Sovik?
It was nice visiting with the guys in the tent, actually.
Good time.
Nice visit.
It was toasty in there, man, that was nice.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chief. All right, now move on to our presentation from the South Lion Area Recreational Authority.
My name is Amy Allen, I'm the director over at the South Lion Area Recreation Authority, and with me tonight, I have our marketing and social media manager, Kristy Hoskins. And, uh, bear with us while we make sure this works, hopefully.
Okay, I'm coming.
IT support.
We thought we had this all set ahead of time, but... It's on here, it's not there.
It's nice to get you just, it's such a small town, seeing you. There we go.
You're on here.
Yeah, we see it. Yeah, we see it.
There we go.
Just to go through this, or to open it in the vault?
You can put it in slideshow, right?
Yeah, from beginning, like that.
They went off, this way. There it goes.
Yeah, it's coming, there you go.
The projector's a little slower.
Very light, so... So, previous to 1999, all the recreation programming went through community education through the South Lion Public Schools. However, at that time, the schools decided that they no longer wanted to provide that service, but the three biggest communities for the school district, Lion Township, Green Oak Township, and South Lion, all sat down and realized that they still wanted to provide recreational opportunity to the residents. So, in 1999, they sat down and created what was called the South Lion Area Recreation And in 2007, it was reformed as the South Lion Area Recreation Authority, according to Public Act 321. The SLARA was previously located at 318 West Lake Street, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, and then about a year and a half ago, we moved locations over to 23333 Griswold, which is over just a couple miles from here, and that's where we currently maintain our services. Our business hours are Monday through Friday between 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And one of the reasons that we decided to move locations was we wanted the ability to expand our internal staff, and also we wanted space to do onsite programming. This new location, if you haven't been there, please stop by and see us, it's absolutely gorgeous, it's two floors of office space, and we also have a multi-purpose room that we utilize, that's just over 900 square feet, and we were able to come up with some policies and procedures, and that we're able to actually rent that out to the public for things like graduation parties, baby showers, and it's been a pretty popular, utilized in our community by residents, so definitely, if you get a chance to stop by our office, let us know, we'll take you on a tour and show you that space, and we also use it for internally for our programs, too. Some of the basics, our Recreation Authority serves a total population of just over 43,000 of those, over 16,500 are households, and about 37% of them are living with children in the area. And our current Board of Directors will look familiar to you, our Board Treasurer is the South Lion City Manager, Paul Zalnet, our Board Secretary is Lion Township Treasurer, Patty Carcone, and our Board President is the Green Oak Township Supervisor, Mark St. Charles, and our Board meets monthly, the fourth Wednesday of every month, at 2:00 PM, and it is open to the public if you ever want to attend. And we wanted to provide you with a copy of our organizational chart, so you can get a sense of kind of how our organization flows. We're overseen, as we said, by a Board of Directors, myself, I serve as the Director to our office. We have three full-time staff, which include a full-time sports manager, an enrichment manager, and the marketing and social media manager. We also have internally for our staff, a part-time... And our Board meets monthly, the fourth Wednesday of every month at 2:00 PM and it is open to the public if you ever want to attend. And we wanted to provide you with a copy of our organizational chart so you can get a sense of kind of how our organization flows. We're overseen, as we said, by a Board of Directors. Uh, myself, I serve as the Director to our office. We have three full-time staff, which include a full-time sports manager, an enrichment manager, and the marketing and social media manager. We also have internally for our staff, a part-time bookkeeper, an office administrator, and then an aquatics manager. And all of these other positions are underneath that level where we deal with lifeguards, swim instructors, referees, officials, day camp staff and such. We also feel that it's very important to put faces to names, so I wanted to include some pictures of our staff so that if you recognize them out and about in the community, you know who you're talking to. So, as you can see, myself, I've been employed with SLARA since 2010. I started as the enrichment manager and the next year was promoted to the Director when we lost our previous Director. Uh, Carrie Hill serves as our enrichment manager and she's been with our office since 2008. Matt Stanley is a newer addition. Uh, he serves as our sports manager. He's been with us since 2017. And right over here, Kristy has been with us since 2018 and serves as our marketing social media manager. She actually was on board a little bit before in a part-time capacity, so we were able to get her snatched up at full-time recently. And to round out our office staff, we also have Katie Fitzpatrick, who's our aquatics manager, that I'm sure a lot of you already know. She is very active in the community. She's been employed since 2001 with our office. She's our longest-standing individual on payroll. Margaret Pierce is our bookkeeper. She's been an employee since 2015 and Mary Scher has been in our office administrative assistant since 2014. One of the things that I had mentioned and that we really are excited about is last year we were able to add a full-time position, marketing and social media. And anybody who works with local businesses knows just how important that is in today's society. Uh, Kristy's come on board and she's done a fantastic job, really increasing our online presence via our website, our Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter, and she's done a remarkable work with the program. I don't know if you've heard about it or not, but the Roaming Rex Program. You'll see in the, one of the pictures, we've got our little dinosaur Rex. Kristy works with local businesses, takes Rex to one of the businesses and takes photos of them and then we, um, publish them on social media sites. So, residents have to figure out where Rex had been visiting. They have to go down to that business and actually they get their gift bag when they go into that business. So, it's really gotten a lot of involvement with people and area businesses. It's been very popular for us. And recently, as a staff, we've all sit down and redefined what we want our goals for the office to be. We came up with a new mission statement, vision statement and core values, so we wanted to share those with you. Um, a lot of times, these things, you hear what they are, but you don't realize the work that it takes to create them. Uh, this was about six months worth of work for our staff to really decide on something. So, every one of the words in these sentences are things that we really do feel. So, you can look over the vision and the core values, but the mission statement that we all came to agreement on was to enhance the quality of life by providing a variety of safe, fun and affordable activities for all ages. We strengthen the bonds of community and create accessible opportunities for renewal, growth and enrichment. And our staff lives and breathes that mission statement every day. Some of the programming areas that we work with, that we offer to the community include aquatics. We have over 1,300 participants each year in our aquatics programs. We also work with five local businesses to provide specialty programs that we might not have the staff for, but they do. Uh, we offer programs for ages six months up to seniors and, uh, some of the less, or some of the programs include swim lessons, scuba diving, dive classes, family swim nights and aqua fitness programs. We also offer enrichment programming. Again, we take about 1,300 registrations a year and in that area, we work with over 60 different local businesses and organizations to help us offer specialized classes. Uh, we run programs such as Safety Town. We do art classes. We do gymnastics, taekwondo, fitness, cheerleading, you name it, we probably run it at some point. We also have, uh, big participation with our sports programs. We do over 2,600 registrations for those and we work with about 13 local businesses and organizations. We do things like sports clinics. We work with a local person to do Quidditch. We do baseball skills. Uh, we also do youth leagues such as soccer, volleyball, basketball and adult leagues like basketball, volleyball and softball. One of our biggest areas that we deal with are special events. Uh, we have over 5,000 people that attend a SLARA special event each year and that's continuing to grow every year as our programs do. We work in providing opportunities such as the daddy-daughter dance in the community. We do an egg hunt in the pool. We did, for this year, the first time we did a pumpkin dunkin' in the pool for Halloween. Um, a candy cane hunt and then we had, this year was our annual Wag This Way Pup Parade, which was our first time. And then, one of our most popular programs is our Island Lake Kids Camp. This program was created in 2010 and we work in partnership with Island Lake State Recreation Area. They allow us to utilize their facility at the Kent Lake Building and it's a 10-week camp that we run over the summer. They get to do things like paddle boarding, fishing, field trips. We have guest programmers teach taekwondo, youth yoga for the kids. And one of the really unique things about this camp is we allow people to attend just one day, if that's what they want to do, or the full 100 days that are offered. We don't have a requirement that they have to sign up for an entire week. We really try to be as flexible as possible for the parents and residents in the area. Last year, in total, we had over 1,700 separate registrations for camp, so that's a lot of kids coming through. Um, and the camp is certified by the State of Michigan, so we follow all regulatory and safety requirements. Some of the information that we also think that it's important for you to have as a community is the benefits that we're providing to your area. SLARA employs approximately 150 local people for our jobs and opportunities and that provides over 300,000 in local wages that we spend. Uh, we provide over, or we work with approximately 300 local volunteers, which volunteer close to 5,000 hours over the year between our sports leagues and special events and that comes out as a value of over 123,000. Um, we, as I mentioned, in each programming area, we also work with local organizations and businesses that provide specialty programs. We work with over 75 of those on an annual basis and we provide over $150,000 in paid fees to those organizations and businesses too. We also partner with a lot of other organizations. Um, we work with businesses for special events and also community development. In 2017, we donated $5,000 to Island Lake State Recreation Area to help them build their very first playground in the park. As one of the busiest parks in the state, it was very disconcerting that they didn't have a single playground in that entire park. So, we worked with them and, uh, we were actually able to close down our office for a day and when they did the park installation, our entire staff and spouses went down and helped build the playground. So, it was a really cool thing that we got to do. Uh, we've also worked with a lot of local businesses for our special events such as Tooth Town, Walmart, Dairy Queen, the Hotel Aubries, um, a realtor named Jeff Muck, who's done a lot of sponsorships, Bush's and Kroger's and a lot of others. Uh, we also work with organizations such as York Parks and Recreation Commission. We work with them on the Local Labor Day Walk and the DDA, like we said, with our pet parade this year and our candy cane hunt with the Cool Yule. And then one thing that we do feel is very important because we know it always comes down to the money and we wanted to provide you with information that shows that we are a very fiscally sound organization and that it is good bang for your buck. So, you can see here, on average, residents of South Lyon, Lyon Township and Green Oak pay about 25% less than non-residents for all of our programs. So, for example, our winter youth basketball league, a non-resident will pay $123 to participate. A resident pays 92. So, in calculating all of the registrations from 2019, South Lyon residents saved over And then the membership contributions, we want you to know how we're deciding what those contributions are and how they're tallied up between the three member municipalities. So, the Board will sit down at this, in the fall and come up with what they feel is a fair and reasonable total contribution amount. And then what I do is I sit down and do participation reports from the previous three years to create an average. So, if we had, I think, from 16 to 19, we had just below 24,000 participants. We took how many were from South Lyon to create a percentage. That percentage came out to just over 47%. So, that annual contribution lump sum, South Lyon paid the 47% of that and other communities contributed what their participation percentage was. To keep you apprised of what we're doing to be fiscally sound too, I wanted you to have our latest budget numbers. So, at the time that this was put together, our latest audit was done from the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Our total revenue was just over 773,000. The expenses were just over 756,000. And you can see how the contribution matches it. The total contribution amount that was determined was just over 48,000. Of that, that 47% came out to the 25,000 for South Lyon. So, you can see it's South Lyon contributed 25, but the residents saved over 68,000 in fees, so it was a good bang for your buck. And just to give you a little bit of reference too, most Parks and Recreation Departments receive about 30 to 40% of their revenues come in, um, from their cities to help offset and to, uh, carry into their revenue. So, where we're only receiving 6.3% of our revenue from contributions from the three municipalities, most offices get 30 to 40%. So, we're making do with a lot of what we can. And one of our best-known marketing tools that we utilize obviously is our program guide. Hopefully, everybody has seen it in their mailboxes. Uh, we send out three program guides a year, uh, to the three municipalities. That averages about 22,000 brochures that we mail, um, each season, so 66,000 overall. And each brochure ranges from 44 to 56 pages of all sorts of great programs that we're offering. So, we're here tonight just to say thank you for your contribution. We wouldn't be able to do nearly what we do without the support of communities, including South Lyon, who's our biggest contributor. So, again, thank you for all that you're doing with, for us and we hope to continue for many years to come. Are there any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have anything?
One thing that I would just want to.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Kristy, I just want to say I do marketing and I pay attention to what you guys do online, um, and it's really great. I, and I didn't know it was a full-time person, but now I can, I can definitely tell what there is, but not just the stuff that you do, but the responsiveness that you have to other people when they have questions and that, I just think it's really great.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I had, uh, one question. Uh, I, I see where you do have some activities that do require a fee. Do you and how do you accommodate families that are from low-income families that are unable to, to pay those fees?
We don't have any directly, any type of scholarship program through our office because it would require us having a whole nother Board of Directors that meet annually, um, but we work with, um, youth assistants to be able to offer programs at very deeply discounted costs for people that qualify for their sponsorships.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're making an effort to.
Absolutely.
Be inclusive and, and that speaks a lot of your organization, that you are attentive to the needs of all individuals in the community regardless of economic status.
We try our best.
So, that's, uh, kudos for the two of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Allen, uh, what percentage are, uh, how, how far have you utilized the acreage of the Duncan property that you purchased and moved to? Okay, uh, you've added some buildings, okay? I think you've expanded some things there too.
We utilize about 1,500 square feet of office space and our multi-purpose room is about 942 square feet. The rest of the building is rented out to other organizations. The Michigan Madcats have a portion of the building. Uh, the Dunkins have created that action sports organization that uses the whole back wind and there's, uh, I believe, a glass company and a door company and then a, a car cleaning company that also utilizes space in there.
Oh, okay, great. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah, there's about six different organizations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, I had the good fortune of being around when this started and, um, you guys have realized everything that we had hoped that you could bring to the party, so.
Yeah.
Just keep doing the good work. I mean, we're, everybody really enjoys this and you guys clearly have a strong presence in this community and everyone enjoys the fact that that's taking place, so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, I just want to get it on the record. I don't know if you knew this or not, Amy, but, um, and Kristy, but I represent the landlord.
No.
So, um, so I just want to say that, um, I would have a conflict when it comes time to your lease.
Oh.
But this is just, uh, a form, but I at least wanted to get it out there that I have done legal representation for, um, for your landlord, so.
We appreciate that. Heads up.
Okay. Anyone else with anything? All right. Great job, guys. Thank you.
You wanted to bring us up next?
Yeah, that's, we're gonna go right into that right now. So, we're gonna jump into new business. The SLARA Athletic Field Court Use Application and Permit Policy and Procedure.
Corey, tonight is the policy and procedure. The Parks and Rec Commission has made the recommendation of city council to approve the new athletic field court use application and permit policy and procedure. This request is being made due to the increased use of the fields, courts, multiple date usage is causing damage to our fields and the resident groups and the city are paying for this use. We've included a memo from Amy, the Director, uh, and also a copy of the application and permit policy. It is the recommendation, or it is, uh, recommendation to approve, um, the Athletic Field Court Use Application Permit Policy and Procedure. And the Director is here to answer any questions that any of you may have regarding this policy.
I have a question.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering, when I was reading through this, um, it seemed like there were some concerns about, um, external people using the fields and I see the different types. I was, I was just wondering, have you ever considered, um, like different dates for applications for the field? Like, uh, you know, residents can apply starting at this date, but then external people can't start until this date, so I just wondered if that would help anything or?
Yeah, that's definitely something that I would like to look into. Honestly, that, that idea hadn't come to me before.
Okay.
This, but that's definitely a way that we may look into changing things, uh, depending on how everything goes the next couple of years.
Okay.
We originally took over for the field reservations in 2014 and we kind of started out and it's been a learning process, so this is kind of our first time bringing back to get some updates made based on situations that we're having. So, uh, depending on how the next couple of years go, that's a fantastic idea on how to do it.
And then just, oh, I'm sorry, just.
Oh, no.
I'm so sorry. Um, the, I also was just wondering, when it said 75% South Lyon residents, I was assuming that meant the three, um, communities?
No.
It is just?
For any clarification purposes too, because there is a little bit of confusion, especially with, um, between the city and SLARA. The city owns the fields, maintains the fields.
Okay.
SLARA, we're just taking the reservations. Uh, when it, we first took it over in 2014, it was because it was a transition year between city managers. Uh, it had kind of fallen by the wayside and you didn't have the staffing as a city to be able to do this.
Okay.
So, we were asked to take it over at that time. Um, but we don't make any of the, the determinations on these policies and procedures. We just kind of put it together and say, is this what you want us to go with?
Okay. So, it is South Lyon?
Yes, it is South Lyon. It doesn't have anything to do with the other two communities. This is solely South Lyon.
Okay.
Councilmember Kibble?
Well, I do like Lisa's idea, the, the idea of the dibs rule, you know?
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I do like also our, our getting priority, uh, consideration on using our own properties.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that this is going to be a useful tool for us, so, thank you.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Amy, the only thing that I wanted to comment on is I've actually been on a field with another organization.
Okay.
Who also had rights with the city where both SLARA and that organization had paid to use a field or a track and there was issues of, I want to say, ownership of who was utilizing that field and that track at that time. So, I, I would hope that, like they say, you know, having the dibs rule or, um, some type of organized, let's make sure we all share the space. If multiple groups are there and have paid their fees to be there, make sure that we can make, we can just play nice.
Yeah, and I, I would definitely encourage you to reach out to me tomorrow and let me know what that situation was because we deal with strictly the sports fields, so things like the gazebo still come through the city for reservation, but we maintain a calendar at our office, so if somebody calls up, they know whether or not an organization has that field booked. We only ever book it to one organization and we send out confirmations with the dates, times, contacts and we say, because we don't have personnel at those fields, we say if there's any issues where somebody's at the field when you're trying to utilize it, print out a copy of this as your proof of reservation and if it ever escalates beyond that, then we contact our local police department to sort that out for us.
Well, hopefully, people can, you know, share space and play nice in the sandbox.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's why we're all out there, right?
Yeah, and we absolutely, we have a great, um, partnership with South Lyon Junior League, who I'm sure you're all very familiar with. They utilize the fields for a majority of the time. Their reservation spans almost the entire year and they've been great about if we have residents that want to use the fields for a family reunion or a party, I just contact Junior League and say, hey, is it possible for us to open up one night? I just contact Junior League and say, hey, is it possible for us to open up one night? And they're usually very willing to do that. So we try our best to accommodate.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Okay, Commando, you've worked out the wrinkles as they have popped up over the years. I found out some new information this past week, okay? I was not clear on that when somebody reserves the gazebo for an anniversary in McCatty Park, for anniversary, birthday party, whatever, that doesn't automatically entitle them to the baseball diamond.
Correct. Completely separate.
All right. I was confused on that issue, okay?
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing on the sign that says anything exactly about that. And, okay, we've had some other little problems, like a wedding or, you know, at the same time with a ballgame or the tot run, the five tot run. You know, that was a little bit of a confusion there.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that stems from them not knowing where to submit that reservation, because I know that we've never had an application for the Kiwanis utilizing volunteer field for the Easter egg hunt. It's something that we always know not to book anything, but the paperwork never comes to us, so I think it gets lost in translation sometimes. So that's where some of these overlaps may be happening, is they're trying to reserve with the city and not with us.
I give you credit. You address these problems as they come along, and so...
We try our best. Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Amy, I want to compliment you on stepping forward and assuming the responsibility for this. You've obviously done a good job over the past years, and especially taken the proactive approach you're taking now to ensure the condition of those fields, so.
Absolutely.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the new Athletic Field and Court Use Application and Permit Policy and Procedure. House of Court.
All right. Councilmember Walton, you had something to add?
I just want to quickly add that your comments here just show us again how we need to have an interactive calendar with the city, not just for SLARA to be on there...
Absolutely.
But the fields to be on there, McCatty Park to be on there, the historicals, Village to be on there. We really, really, really need some type of interactive calendar that houses all this information.
We would love to see that happen, and if there's anything we can do to help try to speed that along, we are always open to it.
I mean, Google Doc is always out there, but I think we have connection to some IT folks.
Councilmember Dill?
Just one more quick thing. It's not a hill I would die on or anything. I just, I just noticed on the amounts for field that type two and, which is South Lion based nonprofit and for-profit are the same amount, and it just seemed like, I don't know, maybe something to consider that maybe they...
That was a recommendation from the city attorney.
Really? Okay. All right, then.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to approve the new Athletic Field Court Use Application and Permit Policy and Procedure. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. Old business number one, Commercial Rehabilitation Act, PA 210 of two thousand and five Tax Abatement Policy and Guidelines.
Well, you have the agenda note before you. Certainly, our topic here, Commercial Rehab Act, Public Act 210 of two thousand and five, Tax Abatement Policy and Guidelines. Probably for the general public, I'll read this explanation. At this time, in response to a current request for a tax abatement by a downtown building owner for proposed commercial rehab tax abatement, the Economic Development and DDA Director, city manager, with assistance from the city attorney, have updated their past research and draft documents and are proposing a new updated commercial tax abatement program, as noted in the attached materials dated January eighth, two thousand and twenty. Commercial tax abatement is available through Michigan Public Act 210 of two thousand and five, the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. I would like to point out that there's also a redevelopment law, almost exactly, for new construction. But we're just tonight only dealing with building rehab, because that's the request we have.
Are you going to get to two fifty-five at some point?
If we were to be approached by someone that wanted to do redevelopment, we would certainly come back. So at this time, the only item up for discussion and approval by the city is this generic procedure and guidelines for the rehabilitation. It's not appropriate, really, at this time, certainly it's going to lead to some questions, and that's perfectly fine. It's not really appropriate to discuss any proposed proposal with regard to any detailed discussion of a project. Adoption of the proposed CTA program will accommodate future specific projects, which will utilize the adopted program, policy, and guidelines if adopted. So, and we would certainly work with Oakland County Equalization, city attorney, city clerk, to make sure that all the provisions are followed moving forward. One other item, it's important to note that we had considerable research and discussion. There was an actual special workshop meeting, January of two thousand and seventeen, when we were considering two projects, one project for rehab and one project for redevelopment. Those projects declined and didn't move forward, so we're back at this point in time. So the attached draft program was provided. It includes the proposed policy and guidelines and other background info. Open for discussion.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Bob passed out the tiered system for commercial tax abatement schedule here.
Yes, that was on the back of the agenda note.
Yeah. So the private investment here, is that just the investment in the real property, or is this the total investment, real and personal?
Well, this, to be honest, this is the very first time I've done this. I believe it is just the real property, and that's the way I see it. I think Paul has had experience, perhaps Lisa, the attorney has had experience. But I believe that.
There seems to be some discussion around it, but I haven't really heard a definitive answer. And obviously, I think we need to know exactly what it is, and maybe it's one of those questions, like you said, that requires a little research, Ed.
Sorry, sorry, Steve.
It's investment in the building.
Okay, so it's real.
Thank you for that clarification.
Real property, okay.
Did you have a question on the tiered system?
No, that was fine. I just want to know what it was based on, what the investment was being made in.
I know it's a lot of information to be thrown at you, and didn't have the expectation that we would accomplish the ultimate goal of perhaps adopting any policy, but that's all in your hands, and I know it's a lot of information.
I got questions.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Bob, I got a lot of questions about this. Okay, maybe I'm wrong, but isn't the engine that drives economic rehabilitation, we are a small community in the corner of a big county, okay, is the overall economy's prosperity? Not necessarily, so it would seem, whether we've got this mechanism in place. When times are rough, like in 'oh eight, six, seven, eight, nobody's, you know, we're in rough shape, nobody's building anything, they're not investing in their buildings or whatever. But now times are much better, okay, and the future looks bright, okay? The engine of incentive, okay, to improve your building is automatically there from the county, without us having to do anything, as I can see it. Now, give me your perspective on this, okay?
I don't understand what you meant by is from the county.
Okay, as a tax equalized valuation goes up, okay, their taxes increase a little bit. Their building increases in value supposedly because it's tax higher. Doesn't that boost the property owner to a higher level that he can borrow money more advantageously to improve his property and get a, you know, get his discount or depreciation after he completes it?
Sure. The building owner takes the typically, sorry about that, the building owner typically does a pro forma on the project, and then deals with that information and then goes to a bank. And there will always be a gap in what the person, so they're looking at, what are the ways of financing it that'll bring the financing into a realistic method to get the project accomplished? So going to, not only does the county play a role, obviously, with equalization, and Paul can describe the whole valuation process, but the county offers through its business development office and finance offices, small business administration financing through the county. So that is something to, the overall financing, SBA guarantee will, in effect, provide financing, and there's often a gap, because SBA doesn't always cover one hundred percent and all the other incentives, so there's often a gap. So tax abatement, if the city adopts a policy, they would look, well, number one, you would be doing two things. You would be creating a district, property by property. So only if there's a request would you create a district for the single request. A separate motion would be to have a public hearing and then approval of the specific request, and you would ask questions and look at the application and look at all the criteria to see if that person is deserving of a tax abatement. It's a two separate actions.
I got some more questions.
Go ahead.
So, but generally, what you see with the pro forma is there's a need for this, regardless of the economy. The other reason is that in rehabilitation, I will tell you that they're recognizing that rehabilitation, we've put a premium on our historic buildings. We have no historic district ordinance that requires the maintenance or the untouchableness of a historic building. So generally, there's more cost involved in the rehabilitation of a building versus new, for the same square footage, to the degree, and then the project description gets into the degree of cost and why that is true for X amount of square footage. Why is that more to rehab that building than building new? It's part of the discussion.
I understand that completely. It's much more costly to rehab.
So if we, as a community, put a premium on historic preservation, it's one of the criteria. All the criteria don't stand alone, but they, they're to be looked at, see, look, think of it as a checklist. How many of the criteria can any given project meet the goals and desires of the community? It's one way of looking at the criteria.
How many, how many clients or inquiries have you had over the last two or three years regarding?
This would be the third.
This would be the third? From a property owner, building owner?
Yes.
It has happened, of course, you know, it's one guy owns the land, the next guy owns the business, or the building, okay, and then another person occupies the business.
This is strictly for the property owner, which is the building owner.
Strictly for the property owner. And building owner.
Well, one of the same.
Well, what if it's not the same?
Well, we have, I, I'm not aware of where you've got a property owner different from the building owner.
Oh, that has happened. It may not be today, but it was, the Drive Street was split that way years ago, okay?
Well, we're not talking about tenants. We're talking about the property owner. That's a legal question. I, I've never heard of such a thing.
Oh, it's common.
To me, the property is the building and the property upon which it sits. It's all the property owner. The property owner owns two things, the building and the property it sets on.
Okay, I'll, I could ask more, but Maggie?
Councilmember Kurzweil?
I'm just going to throw out my issues and take business A. Say, business A comes into town and wants a tax abatement. I used to do commercial documentation for a bank, so I was on the commercial lending side down in Ann Arbor. And what happens sometimes, not always, but sometimes with these tax abatements, is that the lending institution has set up a debt ratio that the borrower has to meet. And the only way they can get those numbers and get their debt ratio down is to get a tax abatement. So I will scrutinize documentation when it comes in, because that tends to indicate weakness in ability to finance the project, because you're looking for a lot of opportunities to reduce your debt load and sort of find somebody else to help pay your loan. That's basically what's going on in the big picture, is, that's the first issue. The second issue that I would scrutinize with this company would be cash flow, is many times when you are rehabbing, you may be rehabbing for a specific purpose, and you may have a business that's coming in that you don't have a track record with. So what you are attempting to do with the tax abatement is to ensure that you have a sufficient cash flow to meet your tax liabilities. So if your tax liabilities are high, then you have more risk in the tenant that comes into your space. But if you can get a tax abatement, then you are lowering your risk, and banks like lowered risk. So that, again, speaks to the strength of the borrower's ability to manage and handle a cash flow. So those are kind of the two issues that I would look at, is that if it appears that the financial strength is not there, then maybe the person has overpromised. And no tax abatement's going to take care of that, because it'll eventually catch up. Those are just my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Bob, you mentioned that you've had three people interested in the tax abatement.
Correct.
That includes the individual that this references here?
Yes.
Okay. And were they all commercial properties, or were some of them industrial properties?
No, the, the only ones that I've dealt with here for commercial, I've dealt with three commercial, I've had discussions with two industrial, separate from this.
Okay. Which is a different mechanism.
Different, yeah, different tool.
Well, yeah, Councilmember Kibble, I was actually going to call on you to hopefully hear some of your opinions based on the fact that you and Councilmember Kurzweil were here in two thousand and seventeen when we went through the work group, so I would definitely appreciate hearing your thoughts on this.
Well, I'm going to just bring my own personal point of view to this whole thing. You had kind of mentioned people will make their pitch, and we would grant that if they're deserving, and in my view, deserving isn't going to end up being arbitrary criterion. It's going, personally, I would like to see us establish essentially a menu of targets that we want to see as assets that would be imported into the building, the things that would end up being a product as a result of this building fulfilling whatever the rehab would end up being. So it's only deserving in that it meets what our desires are, so, but we're the ones that are going to have to populate whatever that menu of deserving things would be. So that's what I'm hoping that we can try to form ideas of what we want to see as assets that would be imported into a project. And obviously, they're going to end up being marginally different with each one. The benefit that we've got with our downtown is, with it being a historic area, there'll probably be some, a lot of parallels with one development to another when it's a rehab. So it's, you know, we're not going from a sixties, you know, glass-faced building and trying to turn that into something more historic, but, but, I mean, that's essentially what I'm looking at, and what Maggie's comments about the financial aspect of it, I don't, I don't know that I, I could see that being a possibility, but I don't know that that's necessarily going to be the way you would read anybody that might end up applying for this, being, having the potential to be seen as not financially capable of pulling it off on their own. I think that a good businessman is looking for any kind of break that they can get, and the benefit of, to the community, is that you make it more viable, that they would entertain the idea of making the capital investment of doing the rehab on their building, which the local downtown would end up getting the benefit of, you know, presenting a better look, more features that would be in our downtown, and those types of assets, so.
I think we start to get to what you're talking about. It's not final, it's a draft, but the criteria... It's, it's not final, it's a draft, but the, the criteria
Mm-hmm.
uh, speaks to a lot of that, what we hope to see. It really is a checklist. Actually, the final format in an application actually could be a checklist.
Yeah.
If I could just finish that up because what I'm hoping is that we, we kind of take that criterion and bracket it to the range of likely relief that they might entertain by the package of assets that they're, they're likely to import into their project. So that it's, it's not just capricious, you know, we, well, I like that, I'm going to end up giving that a higher rating. We come to some kind of conclusions on what we think the value of relief might end up being from grouping things together. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dole?
Thank you. Lyon Township has their criteria laid out. I don't know if you've seen theirs. It's a, it's a point system and it's like a, we call it a go-no-go at my, where I work.
I've talked to Tina over there about that.
Yeah, and it's, um, so it's like this criteria and then it gives points based on what it will do in these different areas and then there's a total and then it helps you decide what, what the abatement will be and how much time. So I just think that that would be, you know, something to look at. I forgot to bring it today, but I read it.
Yeah, we don't need to reinvent things.
Yeah, it's, it was a pretty good, it was a pretty good system.
Well, I think, um, Paul and Lisa, so the attorney, both specifically said, if we can find other examples, sure, let's look at them. And I think as part of the application, that's perfect.
I'll forward it to you. I'm, I meant to bring it today.
Great. It, it may be the one that is in the big document, but please do. It's probably more up to date.
Okay. Yeah, they, it was on their website and I talked to one of the trustees about it.
Yeah, please send it. Be great.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
You know, I, I understand what councilmember Kurtswell's bringing up and I could certainly see where, having that tax abatement, they, they're looking to the city to basically fund their shortfall. Okay? So the vision outstrips their finances and they want to have everything at the point when they open the front door as opposed to maybe scaling it back and finishing the project on kind of a phased approach going forward. And they basically want the city, coming to the city to cover that short, that shortage.
That's one way of looking at it. I don't necessarily agree, but it is one way of looking at it.
Okay.
I, I think we have to look at our, our master plan goals, really what, what do we want downtown to be? I, and I think it's all important. It's all something that we digest. And I think it goes back to what everybody has talked about, the pro forma, the, where we stand on the criteria, logically lay that out to look at the criteria for the number of years as Lyon Township has. I mean, if we can do this as logically, it would be a good thing.
Going to councilmember Kurtswell first and I'll come back. Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
You know, Lisa, I, I remember reading the case and it's been referred to a lot. It's the Pol-Town case and that deals with tax abatements and whether or not they create a binding contract. So in other words, if you grant a business a tax abatement and it's done with the understanding that they're going to stay in business for 10 years and run this business, you know, and they, for whatever reason crash, can you sue for breach of that? And I think Pol-Town, and I think it was also Hydromatic and Ypsilanti, when I was doing tax abatement kind of research, is that I think it's non-binding. So if, I would just kind of like to know, as we proceed with this, what that position is because, is it in there?
It isn't in here, but what we did put in here is the fact that one of the requirements would, that would be that they enter into an agreement with the city. And we've put things in here such as failing to construct and...
That's Pol-Town. That's Pol-Town. So I think we need to probably take a look at the Pol-Town case, look at the case law that has developed since Pol-Town, take a look at Hydromatic, Ypsilanti, and take a look and see whether or not those agreements are even enforceable. Because if not, we could be left holding the bag. But let's at least, um, in fact, I'll even take a look myself.
Okay. Paul, go ahead.
There is a portion within the Act, Rehabilitation Act, that does state that a municipality is allowed to revoke a exemption certificate if they do not follow through with all the items that are pertaining to what they said that they were going to do. Not only the timeframe of completion of it, but also what they were going to provide the community. Let's say, you know, they completed the building and they did not, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading specifically from the Act and the information that was provided by the state that does say that they are allowed to revoke it. And I, we can definitely review it, but that is something that we have, we have looked at.
That's a different issue. Revoking the certificate and saying, we're no longer going to grant you the ability to abate the taxes, a very different issue from, we've given you a tax abatement for five years, you're, you're walking out of town, we did infrastructure for you, we want, we want, we've been damaged by the fact now that you are leaving and we don't get the full benefit of what we agreed to. I mean, it's, it's a very different issue. Yeah.
I think the agreement is key to this too, that Lisa mentioned. I think that'll be, just speak to it. It's all good points.
Councilmember Walton, you had something?
You know, I, I would like to make a motion that we table this and do a little bit more research. Let's get Lyon Township's check system in, let's look into this Pol-Town issue, let's, let's make sure that we have all of our answers, all of our questions answered, that everybody has brought here tonight and then maybe review this draft again.
Are you thinking, do you have a, a date that you think we need? What's a good date for that?
Paul, do you think 30 days is good? Do you want next?
I guess I would want, I would hope that we'd have a little bit more discussion regarding more questions because there's a lot of items that we have not discussed tonight.
Certainly we can have more discussion. I just think that we need to table it.
But you were just about, I wasn't sure if you were about to make a motion. That's why I wanted to make sure that we do have some additional discussion. I think probably if not next meeting, then the meeting after that, perhaps two meetings to bring everything, to bring everything back. But it depends, I guess, what other the conversations are that we have tonight also.
Certainly.
Just for, for clarification, I mean, this is extremely important to be very careful in how you're proceeding. I understand. But along with the law, Paul, what are the, if, if a person approaches us, when can they start construction?
There's a six-month timeframe to the date that they apply for this actual certificate. And if, you know, if some of you have, may have looked at all, how this whole thing proceeds and that somebody, you know, first of all, council, we, or the city would establish guidelines for a commercial rehabilitation, then either the city can initiate or an individual or 50% of it, you know, an area can say, we want to make this a particular district. It could be a parcel, it could be numerous parcels. Then after the district is established, then an individual can apply for that. So it's six months from the date that the application for a certificate actually goes, goes to the state. So somebody could potentially start work, but as long as they apply for that certificate within six months of that date that they started, then they're okay.
So if they were to say, get a building, this, this reality, if they were, go to the building department in two weeks, they could start work if we thought there would be, and it's their risk, if we thought that there was, at least in a process, to take some action, whether it's for or against in the next...
We, within that time for that I just mentioned, maybe Lisa wants to comment on that, but there is that six-month window that is discussed.
I'd be very careful
Yeah.
in, in telling them that it's in the process in the event this takes a lot longer than six months.
It could all be disapproved.
Well, that's just it. And, I mean, because nobody's going to upfront guarantee that they'll end up being approved. So they'll be rolling the dice if they do that.
As the economic development director, no matter which way you go, I would hope that we could resolve it within six months, that's all. I hope that we could know where we stand, hopefully within the next couple council meetings, quite frankly, but that's up to council.
Getting the language is one thing, getting whatever potential...
In the public hearings and...
Yeah, well, and, and the idea that they're going to fulfill the things that we hold as criterion to be able to give them the approval.
Right. Again, it's a two-parter, the district, setting a district specifically.
That's one thing.
Because we're not wholesale, the, the approach that I am proposing, that I think we are proposing, that it's just property specific, so we're not wholesale advertising, we would like people to come in one at a time if they think it's important to their project. Some communities create the whole
Right.
DDA district and I do not think that's the conservative enough approach to take. I would...
I don't understand that one only in that you have a clock running then. So, I mean, the six-month thing, so I, I don't understand how you approve a district where it's going to expire by the time people really end up getting their feet wet about whether they want to try to capitalize on that.
The district doesn't expire, just, you know, the application. You can establish a district and that district can remain there forever.
Okay.
So, I mean, the first part of this process, I guess, and maybe just a little further explanation is that we are just talking about the procedures and the policy, how city, the city would in fact handle a commercial rehabilitation or request for something like that. Then after we establish it, then somebody can apply or the city can say, we designate these three properties to be district. And in order to do that district, then we have to go through the public hearing process, we have to notify the county, we have to notify the taxing jurisdictions and such. And then once the district is established, then somebody can in fact apply to the state of Michigan with an application and say, I would like to apply for rehabilitation within the act to get an exemption for or within that particular district. And then that's when their clock actually starts running that says, from that point, back six months is the timeframe of when they could actually start work.
And we have the ability to have multiple districts? It doesn't, it isn't in the one felled swoop? This is what we decide that we want to see is people that have the opportunity to, to create a district?
Right, right.
I mean, we can do that and then amend it down the road where we establish another district?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
There's provisions within the Act that does define a certain number of acres or can define based upon use, a specific property or property boundary to be a district in itself.
Correct. That's what I, my reading was too, so. One thing I want to request though is that we, we reach out to find other people's language or what they're using as the criterion because...
We did, we did for the criteria.
I, I just want us to end up having the full breadth of what is already seen as valued, valued to a project rather than us having to try to conceive of every angle and then realizing, shoot, we missed a golden opportunity to assign value to something. So that's why I hate the, our reinventing things.
Lisa, go ahead.
We did. We spent a lot of time looking at other communities and, starting on page, so the way we broke this up was, the first section on page two is what the law requires in order to be eligible.
Correct.
And then the next section right under it, which has a lot of bullets going into on two and a half pages, is what we put in would be the city's criteria. Now, what we did not do is allot at any points, as you're indicating you would prefer. And the only reason we didn't do that is whatever you establish in your policies, you would be bound by. And you wouldn't have the flexibility just to judge a case, case by case, based on the criteria. So that's the only reason we didn't do it, but we're happy to accommodate your request, just keeping that in mind. But I also wanted to add, in the two, in the, there's multiple steps in this process as Paul explained, well, it, when you establish a district, you have to have a public hearing. When you decide on this particular applicant, you have to have a public hearing. So that's going to be multiple meetings as well where you schedule the public hearing, notice it, and then have the public hearing. I also wanted to point out as, as Paul was, as Bob was explaining, what we have in front of you is our attempt at policies that would govern all Commercial Rehabilitation Act applicants. So the policies in front of you are one thing. The potential applicant and creating the district, they're really two separate issues. Ideally, you want to have the policies in place first so you can apply it to the district. But if you want to run at least those two simultaneously, you can watch how it proceeds along with your policies. I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can do it if what you want to do is, is speed it up, but not rush into the policies.
Paul, go ahead.
I think one of the important things to do is look at South Lyon as perhaps being different than the township. We are talking about, we could potentially have a couple different areas for district. We could have properties located within the downtown, we could have properties located with, with, you know, outside of the downtown. What necessitated, what necessitated this or the moving forward of this was the advanced work that was done back in 2017 with Bob approached council and discussed regarding some properties that are located within the area that people were looking at establishing the districts. Those never material, those never materialized. Now we're looking at potentially where somebody had inquired about it, we decided to dust off some of that stuff, started to develop the policies and what potentially that you could look at. But a downtown property for rehabilitation for a historic building is extremely different than what somebody may be doing to put out on Grand River or something like that in a policy for something like that. That is completely different. We have to, and council has to, and we will try to assist in helping analyze what that property will do for the revitalization or for the redevelopment of a specific property. And the way this works is you have a specific property, a, a piece of land and a building, you're already paying taxes on that property, you're already getting, you know, a specific amount to the city or to the DDA, whoever it may be. Now you're talking about an influx of investment. The commercial rehabilitation, the Act allows you to give a exemption to the investment that's being done after, not necessarily the original cost of somebody saying, hey, I just bought a $200,000 piece of property, I want a, you know, reduction on that or $500,000 piece of property. Well, that $500,000 piece of property already existed prior to you buying it, it was just somebody else that, somebody else that owned it. The criterion that we looked at, developed, looked at US Department of Interior standards for rehabilitation, so you as council with hopefully recommendations of staff or the attorney can look, what is this property actually bringing to the district? Are they maintaining or are they keeping a historic building within our downtown? And if you assign point values, I just caution you of this, if you assign specific point values, something higher or lower, you never have the ability to change and say, okay, well, this didn't meet the criterion, it was only so many, even though we are looking at trying to develop a piece of property which may have been very difficult to develop. Not only looking at that, you look at applicant's track record, you look at the potential hiring of local vendors with or within the district, the, the profitability of something, the amount of employees that it may bring to the particular area, an underutilized or expansion of a business, or some other things that may be kind of intangibles. We probably listed maybe 20 to 25 different items for you to look at, those that go into the decision-making process. But somebody who does an influx of, let's say, a million dollars into an already existing piece of land and building also provides, as maybe as council Richard was alluding to, an increase in value to the district or an uplifting of value to all the other properties within the district. So this particular property or a particular property could potentially have a lot more lasting effect than just some of the criteria that you're looking at right here. And as was Lisa mentioned also, is that you are looking at several different public hearings for something. One is established of the district, but one is also this investment. You can establish a district and you could have three or four people want to actually apply for an exemption on that particular property, but you may not grant any of them because they don't necessarily meet any of the criterion that you've developed within your policy. But this policy, as well as a potential threshold, are being developed so we can actually lure businesses to this community. So people can see, South Lyon has it together, this is another tool in our toolbox that we can attract businesses to, to the downtown and they can see what it exactly takes in order to potentially get an exemption, which you still at any given time during the public hearing process, the public can comment, we can make recommendations, whatever it may be, until you ultimately make that decision with yea or nay.
Councilmember Kibble?
Kind of on that same vein, I mean, simple fact that a building is being enriched is going to end up having influence on the buildings that are surrounding it irrespective of whether they're in the district or not. And it's going, they're in the comp area, so, you know.
Right.
Yeah, right.
So, one moment. Is the concern, and I just want to make sure I'm following here, is that if we were to go down the road of a point system, that the point system could be manipulated to hit a certain number and then we don't approve it and then we would be open to lawsuits? Is that the concern? No?
No, I think the, the bigger concern for me is you want some flexibility. You want criteria that you're going to evaluate it on, but you, you would, you should consider whether you want to have that discretion, how much to afford, how much weight to afford each of the criteria on a case-by-case basis versus having a strict, this is how many points everyone gets and they have to have these many points before we approve them.
Okay. Gotcha.
I, along those lines, the Lyon Township example is, is a matter of volume too, as Tina said.
Exactly.
And, and Paul pointed out, you know, Grand River's, Grand River Avenue is conditioned. Um, they... said, and Paul pointed out, you know, Grand River Avenue is conditioned, they, she will tell you, they have admittedly very few historic buildings, they would like to have more in their village, they only have like, three or four, three or four, in the, in the new Hudson proper, the unincorporated village, so, it is somewhat of a different ballgame, because they don't want to have as much flexibility with the potential, a lot of requests for rehab of any building, nonhistoric.
Councilmember Richards, you had something?
Just a question on creating district or sections, you know the city is split right on, in the center of Lake and Lafayette with section 28, 29, 30, and 31 of the township, okay, could, theoretically, could one quarter of the town divided in that way be a section, okay, for a potential grant set up, okay, or would, could both of them, two sections go together?
I think we, for economic development, I think, again, we have areas, we have our historic core, and we have wonderful businesses outside of the historic core, and as Paul said, we want to look at it on a case-by-case basis anywhere, we don't want to just look at one specific area, it would be unfair, now, obviously, the historic core is basically East Lake and North Lafayette.
Yeah.
But, they're, you know, a building that was not originally built for commercial purposes might get rezoned, even though it looks like it was built like a house, it could be a historic building that is now in commercial zoning, commercial use, there might be something like that outside of downtown, or, we come back in, if we're not talking rehab, we're not, we're only talking rehab on this, Lyon Township is also talking redevelopment and rehab, right now, we're just looking at historic building rehab, and that really limits where we can do this, because we don't have too many older buildings of any sort outside of the downtown, outside of the DDA.
Okay, no question, no further questions.
I think, again, I, just to reiterate, the task at hand, really, the most important, obviously, the first step is, is the district, to feel comfortable with the program and guidelines, and then we'll deal with specifics as that whole second part of the process, if we ever get there.
We can certainly bring back some other examples for you to look at, include within the packet, so you can see how other communities have, I think, within the packet, Bob did provide something from another community, I believe it was Ypsilanti, and what some, some of the criteria that they actually looked at, and just, I guess, and another example is that, what we're looking at is, the way the threshold is, is if somebody makes a certain amount of investment, let's say, a million dollar investment, they're looking at getting a tax abatement for a certain number of years on that investment, applied to a specific millage rate, so if it was located within the DDA, it would only be dollars that would be going directly to the DAA, so let's say they made a million dollar investment, they talk about providing, or let's say, the taxable values, you know, let's say, $500,000, you know, it's about $14,000 perhaps in taxes, what that is, is really just deferring you the amount of taxes that the actual city is going to receive for a number of years, if you deem it to be one year, the city doesn't receive any additional taxes for that development for the one year, then after that, the city receives the normal taxes that they normally would, if they decide to do it for two years, then it's a two years, but at some given point in time, the city will, or the DDA, whoever it may be, will ultimately receive the total number of tax dollars that are generated by the taxable value, taxable value times the specific millage rate, so it's not just going to be an exemption totally on the property forever, but always understand is that, that initial, initial property value is always applied against the millage rate, so you will never stop receiving any of the original money that the city was receiving for the DDA or the other taxing entities.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Bob, how much was invested in refurbishment there at the lemon tree, the venue, and...
Just under $400,000 total, building and rehab.
All three, all three properties? Exquisite kitchen, venue, lemon tree?
The building owner was not interested, I brought it up when he was talking to me about financing.
How much money was invested in it, was the question?
Venue and exquisite kitchen were done at once, and that was a little over $500,000. They would have conceivably qualified if we had something in place, but he did not want to...
Right, lemon tree?
He did not approach us.
How much was invested in that refurbishment?
The lemon tree, the purchase and rehab's right around $400,000.
So, there's a million dollars.
The rehab is the only thing that matters, though.
Right, right, it's the rehab, so the rehab itself on the lemon tree is about 300...
So, we're close to a million between all three properties, and we didn't have to sacrifice any tax dollars for that.
Well, they were smaller projects.
Well, they totaled up to almost a million dollars.
No, we don't have to do anything, but I think to, to say if we're serious about our historic character of our, to come in and make it more feasible for someone, there's no doubt, and I'm repeating myself, but there's no doubt that, I would say, with the people that I talked to that were interested in buying the RCA building, there was one other person out of about seven that would have retained the building, everybody else was going to knock it down, because they thought it was too expensive, and they were right.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
The, do you know where the Health Styles building, down across, like, the donut shop, isn't it, somewhere in that area?
The...
Towards Jeff's, maybe, a little bit more.
Physical therapy?
The physical therapy place, yeah, so, do a rehab on that building, I mean, you've got a structure, it's, it's not as though this is only...
It's not just for historical.
Likely for being historic buildings that are going to be...
Absolutely correct.
Yeah, redevelop, or rehabbed, so...
Those are just, some of the criteria, there's no one criteria on the list of criteria that guarantees you anything.
Yes, right.
To be viewed as 20 potentials.
And, and a lot of the downtown that is yet to be really brought into the economic game is almost undeveloped, you know, so, I mean, everything is...
The other law, the redevelopment law, that we would have to come back.
Precisely, yeah.
It'd be a very similar process, but we have not had any requests.
Right, a little longer duration and a little bit more rigid, I think, but nonetheless, this would end up, I mean, this one is, is an immediate application, we can end up capitalizing on in the event that we inspire people to, to recognize the opportunity.
True.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there's an awful lot of places this can go that don't have to be in the immediate downtown.
Absolutely.
And that the, the immediate downtown is still going to end up enjoying the use of the redevelopment.
You can do both in, in all parts of the city, because there are empty lots, or development potential shown in the master plan, where there would be new development
Yes, right.
In the core downtown and in the DDA, which would need the redevelopment piece.
Correct.
If we're approached by someone.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Bob, do you know how much was spent redoing the Brookdale Plaza, all the facades, putting that swimming pool in for the British Swim Club and all the rest of that down there?
No, I've, I've tried several times, as I'm putting together my annual report to get that information, and they, it's been difficult.
And again, we didn't have an abatement, and we didn't have to give away any tax dollars for any of that.
No, no, I will, I will, I see where you're coming from, but again, that's, that, that wouldn't have anything to do with our architectural character down there, our heritage.
I understand that, I understand that, I'm just looking at, you know, success breeds success, okay, the city's on the move, people want to be here, I don't know that we have to entice them, if this was 2008, yeah, maybe, I'm not really sure that, we need to give away the tax dollars, you know, in a small, you know, what that represents for our budget, what we could do with that in the DDA budget, could be significant.
Well, I think, I will tell you that the DDA took action, their last meeting, we had a spirited conversation, Paul mentioned some things, and they're just an advisory group on a matter like this, they voted unanimously to have you support approval of the program and guidelines, they didn't take a position on any project.
Right.
Because they think it's important, their historic character, they feel very important.
Councilmember Dilg?
It seems like we shouldn't wait until the market crashes to start talking about these guidelines, so whereas we might not approve something because we don't think we want to wait, you know, we don't want to give away something we don't have to, we really should get the guidelines in place, so that if we need to do it, or we want to do it, we can do it, we talk, all of us talk, everybody who ran for council talked about rehabbing the downtown, and it just seems like, just because the economy is good right now, we shouldn't be like, well, too bad, you know, I just think that, personally, I think that we should get some guidelines established, and, and if we don't want to approve somebody at that time, that's a different story.
I, Paul said it perfectly, it's another tool in our toolbox.
Right.
For a historic downtown, it's a critical tool, and you could turn on everybody that comes before you if they can't make their case.
Market crashes tomorrow, we don't want to be playing catch-up. It's not going to crash.
Councilmember Richards?
I'm just saying.
Well, Bob, I agree with having tools in the toolbox, that's for sure, but when you've got a large building downtown, such as Occupied by Tenpenny, and they're perfectly happy with the way they are, they would have closed up and moved out of town a long time ago.
Well, that, that's the situation for the, currently, they pay their taxes and they have no plans to rehab, they're not planning to invest $1,000, they're not planning to invest 500 or 2 million, they're just setting pretty, this is for new investment.
Yeah, but you're going to have some people that are satisfied, the status quo, just where they are, you know.
So, it doesn't apply to them.
And they're not going to say, well, I don't care about it, you know, I want...
Someone that is not applying, not investing, wouldn't qualify for any of this criteria, there would be no reason for them to seek an abatement under our guidelines here, there's... And now, the only thing they could do is come into Board of Review and say, whatever their issue is, but they, they would not, a building that is not planning new investment would not qualify, that's what the threshold is on the diagram, they have to invest according to this diagram, which is used generally in, in many communities, generally, we're suggesting a minimum of $500,000, now, that's going to keep the amount of activity down, you asked specifically about venue, and those other buildings, so we're trying to put this at a conservative cap, I can tell you right now, I think that the Tenpenny building would be likely, if in the future it changes use, the Providence Medical Center, I don't know of another building or site in the core downtown where this would work, I really don't, there might be one or two others, but I doubt it.
That's a good, yeah, okay, well, here's, here's where I'm at with this, I think we've had a good discussion, I think my concern coming into this was, many of us weren't here for that work group in 2017, so, and it was quite a dry read, you know...
It's great to start tonight, you fall right asleep.
Well, I just liked, I wanted to hear from the people that were there, and where we're at, I tend to agree with Councilmember Dilg, where I think we should have this as a card to play when the time is right, so let's get it figured out, Councilmember Walton, did you make a motion to table this?
I just, I can't ask questions on the information I don't have in front of me, so...
Right, so, I, well, I just wanted to make sure, did you already make a motion to table this?
Nope, they, no, they couldn't make a motion.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to table this, we don't got to go long, I feel like any of us that are going to have questions will have them either by next meeting or possibly, Lisa, go ahead, sorry.
No, I just, you know, we put some time into this, and if you can give us directions so that we can come back with changes, or, and maybe even, Paul, I don't know if, if this is appropriate, but maybe we could assemble some different samples and then email them, so that everyone has them between this meeting and next meeting, rather than just table without giving us some direction on what you want to see, so we can move it along.
Yep, nope, fair, that's, that's a great, great addition.
We can show you some examples about what a potential tax abatement may be, what it means, let's say, in existing property value at such and such, let's say, this sort of investment, what kind of numbers we're actually talking about, I would like to know if there's anything else from Councilmember Walton, if was there something else that you, that was not included that you wanted within the packet to make a decision?
One of the, the examples was having the, the point system.
Okay.
I can't remember, there was another one too.
We talked about applications used in other communities, there's one here, but we can look at others.
And there were questions, aren't there questions, didn't Councilmember Kurzweil, didn't you have the question on what happens if a build, a development falls through, or a business falls through after a certain amount of time?
Yeah, and I think what, you know, not to, it's getting late, but I think what happened in the Poltown case was, they had granted all these tax abatements, and those tax abatements were granted under the condition that jobs were going to be brought into the community, into Hamptonham, and then the economy turns bad, and Poltown closes down, and so they tried to recoup some of the money that they lost with the jobs, because, you know, the restaurants closed and everything, and, and I think that went to the Michigan Supreme Court, if I'm not mistaken, so I think in the end, and I do know one of the attorneys that litigated another tax abatement case, and that was on Ypsilanti, and I, and there's just nothing you can do, so I think you need to go in to these arrangements, understanding that you will probably have limited enforcement opportunities should something go south, and so you may be stuck with something that you really can't enforce, I mean, big deal, so you revoke their tax certificate, they don't care, they're out of business anyway, so...
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Just, just a quick one on that, the problem with Poltown was that they had destroyed an existing circumstance that was already there, to, to make the land available for Poltown to take place, you're never going to recoup that, so we don't really have a parallel that we need to be concerned about that, the, you still will have, the asset will be standing there, whether it had been fulfilled or not, you still have the assets sitting there, and much like Lisa had said, having this and never using it is way more valuable than us trying to flesh something out overnight, because an opportunity presents itself and we're not prepared, so I think that this is a must, that we should add, we should do the work and get something on the table.
What we're trying to do is, we'll try to provide additional information you by next meeting, and then we'll try to set, if, if additional items start to come available, we'll look at having the, the next meeting, not the next meeting, but the following meeting, where we actually have discussion actually on the agenda, would that work for everyone?
Sure, and I'd like us to never have to use it, I mean, everybody says, nah, I'm covering my own costs, that'd be fine with me, but...
Okay, well, I'll entertain that motion, to table...
Two meetings, is that what you said? Yeah.
Councilmember Kibble?
Do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
All right, I make a motion that we table this, or, do we have a date?
First meeting in February?
Oh, it's the first meeting in February, that's correct, yes.
February 10th.
February 10th.
I'll support.
Any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, all right, good stuff, Bob. New business number two, purchase and installation of a unit heater for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant.
Doug Varney is here today to discuss the unit heater for the maintenance garage, had a cracked exchange earner, it does need to be replaced, the current gas-fired one is rated for 125,000 BTUs, and three quotes are attached for review, there is support regarding the purchase of a new water heater for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant for the amount of $5,310 under line item 592-557-931, Doug's here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this purchase.
Councilmember Kurzweil, and then I'll come down to you.
Yeah, I move to approve the purchase and installation of a new unit heater for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant for the amount of $5,310 under line item 592-557-931.
I'll support.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Doug, I want to thank you for taking the time to go through this installation over at the maintenance garage today and answering the questions, were you able to get the answer on the...
I was, actually, yeah, that is going to be one year, parts and labor.
One year, parts and labor from the supplier as well?
Yeah.
The other thing, just for the benefit of Chief Sovick, who probably noticed that we had a bid in there from a person that he also got a bid for, for his HVAC installation from back in 2018, I discussed that situation with Mr. Varney. I discussed that situation with Mr. Varney so that we avoid that situation going forward from that particular supplier. So unfortunately, he wasn't aware that you had encountered problems with that individual in not being responsive to providing the additional detail when you asked for that information back in 2018 on what was he going to specifically install at the Police Department Admin Building. So I hope that we avoid that situation going forward. And basically, you know, we have certain people that we work with, develop a relationship with for service and so forth going forward, so. Thanks, Doug, I appreciate it.
No problem at all.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the purchase and installation of a new unit heater for the maintenance garage at the Clean Water Plant for the amount of $5,310 under line item 592-557-931. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. New business number three this evening, purchase and installation of new, how do you enunciate that word there?
Flight.
Thank you. Explosion-proof submersible pump for the Eagle Heights lift station.
That is correct. Want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
So we have a lift station out at Eagle Heights that recently had a pump failure. We were able to replace the failed pump with one that we did have available on the shelf. There are two, in every single lift station throughout town, there are two lift station pumps. And the only option for this direct replacement in this particular instance is offered through Kennedy Industries. Xylem would be the manufacturer of the pump, the flight pump. In my opinion, it's the best one out there. This expenditure can be purchased out of the equipment miscellaneous account, 592.557-977, and all quotes are attached for your review.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like you to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of the new flight submersible pump for the lift station at Eagle Heights for $8,700, under line item number 592.557-977.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Richards, to approve the purchase of a new flight submersible pump for the lift station at Eagle Heights for $8,700, under line item 592.557-977. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for being here, Doug.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Councilmember Kurzweil?
I'll make this quick, Mr. Mayor. Paul, I just want to know, have you had an opportunity to contact Andy Meisner?
We were in contact with the Treasurer's Office regarding meeting regarding investment policy, and we're going to meet with them to talk, and also meeting we have set up with our auditors regarding our pension liability. And after we get all the details, then we're going to set up the meeting with Andy to meet with him, to get him all the details regarding having a meeting here and what we're exactly going through and moving forward with our pension liabilities, as was directed by council.
Okay, good, because I want to make sure we're still on track. Have you called him to look at a potential date, because he's a pretty busy guy?
No, we have not.
Excuse me, can I get him? I actually did speak to him. I just happened to see him at a party and asked him, and he said that he would be willing and open at any of our upcoming meetings.
I would think this soon we could get a hold, I'll tell you why. Because there are some things Andy can talk to us about that other people can't. He has a different range of experience than other individuals do, a wealth of experience. And my issues, particularly as we move into the budget season, is, is I understand the expenditure side. I worked on the budget in September and October, and I know the areas that I'm going to be focusing on.
Okay.
So I have my list of things that I knew I was going to carry into the 20 budget season. The missing link, of course, now has to do with revenue. It's on the revenue side. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, I haven't seen the budget, so I don't know if you are going to be requesting any increases in millages to cover whatever is being presented. So that's the missing piece, I don't know. But that is fairly important because we are looking at possibly this year alone is the RTA tax coming on board, and that would be coming from the state, and that is uncapping headly. And that potentially, like Mindy said tonight, could be up to five mills. And we in South Lyon will never see a dime of that money. And I know seniors that I have met with regarding the taxation that is going on in 2020, and they are, they are starting to get very, very worried. Because you don't, you not only have the RTA tax, which may come up on the ballot in November, possibly, you have the DIA renewal, which is coming in two years early. So I don't know if they are asking for an additional mill. I don't understand why they're coming in now, because that mill doesn't run out for at least two more years. So I don't know if this is going to be additional. You have the school bond, have no idea what that mill is going to be. We now have a new tax that is being talked about, it's called the Oakland Enhancement Millage, and that would be put on in Oakland County. It's going to be, it's the intermediate school districts that are going to be taxing countywide. That money supposedly will be going to school districts that need assistance, Pontiac. So Oakland County, South Lyon will not reap the benefit. So if you have all these taxes that are coming through in 2020, where are you going to find room in our budget to increase a mill by .5 to cover roads, to cover improvements over at the Water Department? These are, this is major. This is absolutely major. And I would like Andy to be here to say, you know, you don't have a whole lot to say about this, but you need to understand that when you have cities with unfunded liabilities like pension and like OPEB, where are we going to find the money to catch up with that when we have got the state and the county taxing literally people out of their homes? Because I had seniors that I met with over Christmas and said, it's this RTA tax, it's this new Oakland Enhancement Tax. I'm supposed to vote for a tax to give money to Oak, to Pontiac on the, on this new tax? And yet sit here and vote for a school bond issue to put in new turf and pools over in the high school? Where are you going to find the money? So these are legitimate concerns. So I want to bring that up for the budget, this could be a very, very trying budget season. Because some of these mills are coming on in March and in May. So it could be a very difficult year for us.
Anyone else with anything on the budget this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to the manager's report, Paul.
In relationship to the budget, I supplied all of you copies of the information I compiled regarding your request for the upcoming year's budget. We just had a budget staff meeting with department heads last week discussing how we're moving forward and the presentation of budgets within each specific department and gathering data together. I, we are meeting with our auditors to discuss the preliminary water and sewer rate analysis next week. We're also meeting with our auditors regarding the OPEB and pension liability. I wanted to gather that information together first before we brought Andy in, so I can get him some advance notice on, on where potentially we are standing. I also got all council members' comments regarding the council rules or procedure. I'll be compiling that information and getting to you, and we'll have a meeting. I did update you as regarding Thomasville, that former property that was up there on 11 Mile Road. We had met with the developers there, and they're going to be submitting new plans for potential PUD on that property. Upcoming council agendas, as was mentioned tonight, we're going to have information and discussions and presentations by police department and fire departments regarding their operations and accomplishments at the first meeting in February. And I also included some information in your packet regarding the rails to trails where South Lyon was mentioned within a state publication. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone have anything for Paul tonight? Thank you, Paul. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. All right, we'll close public comment and move on to council comments. Councilmember Richards, we'll start with you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I usually discuss a number of things that are outstanding, but everybody knows about it already. So what I thought I would do tonight is just mention a few topics that we've left, left in, in the past of last year, and we haven't completely addressed. And I'm not making any recommendations, just something for, throwing out for each of us to think about, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you're aware of it, but our People's Express contract has a year and a half to go, and although they may not have legally violated the contract, the spirit of the deal is quite broken, to my way of thinking. And if you want to look at it, I think we should take a look at it. It would cost me and other seniors $16 round trip now to go to Walmarts and back. That's a little excessive and beyond most of our seniors' capabilities. Some of them may be doing it, though, I don't know. Okay, next item up, the old problem, 110 Detroit Street. I put in my budget recommendations that we set aside a little money, okay? If the legal, our legal efforts to improve this piece of property after this many years, I think it's two and a half, three years, can't come, can't get the job done, then let's make them an offer and buy the place, okay? Because that can be turned into a, a regular little business office of some sort. And rather than just letting it continually sit there and deteriorate year after year, it sits behind Providence Hospital Clinic, for those of you that don't know what I'm talking about, 110 Detroit Street. Okay, next item, just throwing it out, somewhere along the line, we've got to get along with what we're going to do about this two-mill pollution problem, okay? Now, this isn't going to go away, folks, and other people are getting out in front of this. And I'm not, I'm not making any definite recommendations where we're supposed to go, but I'm just throwing it out there, I think we better be looking at it coming up in the next year here. Next item, I want to let you know I inspected the DPW property last week, and I was very, very nice to talk with Ron over there, and, because I was interested, we've committed quite a lot of expenditure with HRC to improve the place, and he told me to go around and take a look at what the high points of what was going on and how much has been done. And I'm happy to report that it's out of, things are moving slowly, but it's very well organized, and it's going to proceed in a very nice manner in the rest of the springtime. Okay. Okay. Through this coming year, I think we can expect an increase in requests for annexation into the city, especially after this fire at the Cantina. And that's my opinion that that place will never be rebuilt, in the, as long as it's in the township. To access on the sewer and water, and to be able to borrow money to rebuild it, they'll have to annex into the city. And with that, when that happens, the rest of that strip may want to come in also, because they all have the drainage problem and the bathroom problem and... Anyway, I'm just letting you know, okay, that's a possibility I think we ought to look at in, in this coming year. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kibble?
Well, I heard that we had a lot of fun things going on over the, the previous month. I just wanted to give congratulations and thanks to everybody that had been involved in all that stuff, the, from Cool Yule right through the New Year's Eve parade, everybody that was in the parade, the people down at the Witch's Hat, the, the whole package was terrific. So I think that we have an event that can grow and have legs, and I'm really excited to see that. So that's, I think I'll, I'll just sit on that one and let everybody else fill in the rest of the news.
Thanks, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to stay on the positive side as well, with the exception of, can we please turn the heat on in here, I am freezing?
We need those fire buckets.
Really? Where are they? But to keep it on the positive note, I, there's been so many great things in our city, not just the events that we do. First United Methodist Church held an event yesterday where they created 113 bowls that are painted by local, I, I guess everybody local, anyone could go in, paint the bowl, and it's used to serve soup in an empty bowls event later on, where the money is donated to charity and feed the homeless in Detroit. So that was a pretty cool event, 113 bowls that they made. We have South Lyon Youth Assistance worked with several companies to take 72 young persons out shopping for the holidays at Walmart. I think Oakland County Sheriff's were involved, Lyon Township Fire Department, SLARA, all kinds of, you know, local areas. So 72 kids got to go out shopping for the holidays with the youth assistants. And then we have a high school student out there by the name of Mackenzie, and I don't know her last name. She works in the program where I, it's called PALS, I believe now, it used to be CHUM?
Peers.
Peers, thank you. Where the students are partnered with special needs students, that they always have a friend in, in school, and she recognized that one of her peers needed some clothing, and she was able to collect clothing from the, from South Lyon Swap for some, from several different people, and now she's opening a clothing closet at the high school. This is at South Lyon High School, not at East. So maybe East will adopt this as well, I know that the middle schools have it. But that's pretty awesome that we have a high school student who recognized this need, and she found a way to, to fix it for the student. And lastly, I want to say to Pastor Mike, who recently left our community after eight years, good luck in Cadillac, we're going to certainly miss you, and we'll, we'll keep your wife and daughter here for another few months until she graduates, but thank you for sharing them with us, and thank you for sharing all your years of service in our community. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. Really quick, I went to the Lemon Tree grand opening this week, and it was so great, and I think the best part of it was the other store owners that came and were also supportive. That whole block of, of, it's a block of women, powerhouse of women over there, and it was, it was a great event, and it was just really wonderful to see all the other owners being really supportive. And the building is just beautiful, I cannot believe how much different it looks. So that's exciting. And then there I met the, the new business owner who took over Lafayette Middle Eastern, Mr. Carano and Mr. Mancini, they're going to turn that into Mancini's Mediterranean, they said, and he's very excited about that, so that's going to be another good business there. And then just wanted to say, I've spent a little time at Corner Social at the new wine bar, and we're having our book club there, so it's, it's really a great place. I've been spending so much time in downtown because you can now, and I just think it's just really wonderful. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, as I discussed earlier, I spent time in September and October focusing in on the issues that I'm going to focus on in the budget for 2020. And I would like to thank a gentleman by the name of Eric Mays, who spent some time with me in December, and we chatted for a while about public service, public responsibility to facilities that are entrusted to us that deal with public health and public safety, namely, the Water Department. And Mr. Mays was a phenomenal individual to speak with, he was very inspiring. And he's a, he's a great person to speak with. He's very involved with the water crisis in Flint. He knows a lot about lack of funding when it comes to managing water facilities and the delivery of a water system. He had a lot of comments to say about the, the trappings of, of not doing what you should be doing, and always stay focused, as he told me, Ms. Maggie, on, on your...
as he told me, Ms. Maggie, on, on your responsibilities for public safety and public health. And I think that pretty much sets where I'm going to be going this year. Eric Mays sits on the City Council for the city of Flint. I also had an opportunity to speak with another one of his co-members, and I will be going up to Flint to meet them personally and thank them for an absolutely inspiring conversation. And, and they were so willing to share what happened to them in Flint, and their phones are open, and they are willing to talk to anybody about anything dealing with water, and how important it is to stay focused on making sure that these facilities are funded and funded appropriately. And that's the priority. The public is trusting us with a very important commodity. And, and I just want to thank Eric Mays. So hopefully, Eric, you'll be listening tonight. Additionally, I would like to thank DPW Saturday night. Many of us heard their trucks going through town as they were sold in the streets. And sometimes we forget that this is a department that works almost around the clock in really bad weather. And I can assure you, they were not sitting in cabs that were 70 degrees. These gentlemen work extremely hard in the wintertime, and just ask everybody to be patient with snow when it comes, and just be thankful that we've got the work ethic that we do with our DPW workers. Additionally, I had the cutest Girl Scout come to my door, and I bought a bunch of Girl Scout cookies from her. If anybody is out there and wants Girl Scout cookies, let me know, and I'll give you her name. Please support the Girl Scouts. It's a great cause. And last, one of my favorite businesses in town is South Lyon Theater, and I know what I'm going to be doing this week. Dr. Dolittle opens up, and I think I'll probably go to Lake Street Tavern, grab a dinner, go across the street, see a great movie. You know, the movies are great. It gets you away from your cell phones. It gets you away from your video games. It gets you away from your Facebook rants, and it puts you into a really nice environment where you just have, you can just sit back and think about the world and enjoy something very pleasant. And so I would encourage everybody to get into the theater and see Dr. Dolittle that is coming, I believe, on the 17th. And then after the movie, of course, I'm going to go to the, our new wine bar that is downtown. So you can spend a whole evening in downtown South Lyon, which I plan to do, because I love the theater. So thank you. Good night, everybody, and have a great week.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past week, Ann Arbor firefighter Amy Pennywit died when she was struck by a pickup truck that was driving too fast for the icy road conditions. Firefighters were responding to multiple crashes on 994 when the pickup truck, pickup truck came on, up on them and lost control on the icy surface. The vehicle struck Pennywit and another firefighter as they tried to get out of the way. The other firefighter was not seriously injured, while Pennywit suffered critical head and chest injuries. She passed away a few days later from her injuries in the hospital. She was 34 and had been in the department for seven years. She left behind a husband, a child, other family members, and friends. While our thoughts and prayers go out to her, to her family and to the City of Ann Arbor Fire Department, this is an important reminder for everyone to take weather conditions into consideration and drive appropriately. Move over when you see the lights flashing alongside the road and slow down. Help keep those safe who are working to keep you safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Nice to get back in the saddle tonight. I expect a big 2020 from all of us here in the city, and it's a joy to work with you all. And let's go get it for another year. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Have a great night.